Call the school board meeting of independent school district forty-two to order this January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district mission statement, Little Falls Community Schools promotes personal and academic excellence in a collaborative, safe, and engaging environment. Our first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Boom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll have a presentation by Mr. Mathers and Susan Benjamin, Katrina Boglak, and Jordan Leiser.
And I'm just an audience member.
You're critiquing.
There he goes. Is it better?
Nope. Hi, I'm Susan Benjamin and my colleagues Katrina and Jordan, and we're super excited to talk about Alex Math. I really see it as a game changer. It's one of those instances where technology is allowing us to do something that really would be impossible without technology. Here we go. I'll show you a couple screenshots of what the program looks like in just a minute. But basically, it's a program where the kids log in and the first thing they do is an assessment that they call a knowledge check. And this not just shows what the child already knows, but determines what they're ready to learn. And so, once they get going in the program, they work through very narrow topics. So, for example, in the sixth grade curriculum, the math curriculum is divided into three hundred and ninety topics. And they'll get a set of problems for each topic. And then, as they progress through and learn more topics, they get more advanced topics. A couple of the advantages for this program, one is it differentiates down to the individual level. So, if a student understands how to add fractions, but doesn't know how to multiply fractions or divide fractions, they get practice on the things they need. And in a room of twenty students, they can be working on twenty different things without the teacher somehow trying to generate that. They get immediate feedback on all their practice problems. So, you know, they press enter and they find out, hey, I did that correctly? Or nope, you made a mistake, you need to try that again. And that's something that a teacher can't provide at that level. There are no multiple choice questions, so they can't guess their way through and kind of trick the program into thinking they understand it when they don't. For each problem, as they go through, they get an explanation of how to do it. And one of the interesting things that Katrina and I have noticed with one of the classes we're working with is that initially, when they were on Alex, they'd get to a problem and it'd be some new concept and immediately their hands would go up. You know, I need help, I need help. Now they know, okay, I can look at the explain for this problem, read through it, and then give it a try. And if I still didn't get it, I can go back and look at that again. And I can still get teacher help when I need it, and we spend the whole class, you know, providing that assistance. But they're doing a lot more independent learning. And they're sort of learning how to learn and that they can read through material and look at the practice and get feedback and use that feedback to learn the concept. Another cool thing about it, and I'll show you a couple screens, is the level of teacher monitoring of how they're doing and how they're progressing. So, this is a summary for an individual student. Alex has this chart they call the Alex pie, which shows the kid where they are in the curriculum. So, this particular student has learned a hundred and eighty-four topics. The dark colors show the ones they've shown mastery in, in an assessment. And then, the lighter bands are ones that they've been able to do practice problems correctly for. This shows their progress in a particular week. So, on Monday, they learned four new topics, on Wednesday, eight, on Friday, four new topics. Time spent, and kind of a graph that's similar information to this. But then, this chart here is something that is really useful as a teacher because you can see, okay, here's the particular topic they were working on. They read the explanation, got their first problem wrong, went back to the explanation, and then got three right. You can see how much time they're spending on each of those. You can see if they're just getting stuck and they need maybe an intervention for you to come in and help them with that particular topic. It's just really a minute-by-minute record of how they're spending their time. And then, here's just an example of a problem that a student might have. This is one where it's a word problem, where they have to subtract using decimals. And then, the explanation, they just do a really nice job designing these to give tips of kind of how you should do it, definitions. And there's even video examples for these that we're finding so far, the kids, most of the kids aren't using that much, but there are a few that are really, hey, I want to see the video and learning that way. So Katrina's going to talk a little bit about, currently, we have about sixty-five kids using Alex as kind of a pilot. About thirty-five of those are using it in two classrooms, and Katrina's involved with both of those.
Yep, so I have two classes that actually have the Alex Math Program in them. So, in my third period, we started that a couple months into the school year. And also, in our fourth period class, which is a personalized learning class. So, we have Alex days in those classes, so we usually have an Alex day about two to three times per week. They are on Alex the whole class time during that time. Students are working on Alex and then, like Susan said, if I could be sitting here and Susan's sitting next to me, we could be working on two totally different things. Wherever that student is ready to learn, that's what they're learning. So, we could be working on all different things in the class. And then, me as the teacher, I'm walking around, like Susan said, answering questions. If they've hit that explanation button a couple of times, and then now they're ready for that teacher assistance. So, that's kind of what I'm doing and monitoring on my laptop as well as what they're doing in the Alex Math Program on that teacher screen that she's showing. One example for Alex as an extension, I have one student in my class that, last year, he was in an advanced math class, and then this year, he was put back into a regular math class. At the beginning of the year, I got a lot of questions from his parents saying, why is he getting put back into a regular math classroom? And I really couldn't answer that question, so they're kind of being frustrated with he's not being challenged enough. So, I got some frustration both from the students and the parents as well. So, when we met for conferences, I had talked to Susan prior to conferences and just said, do you think Alex would be a good solution to this for him to be challenged both in my classroom and for him to do it at home as well if he had internet access? So, we thought this would be a great solution, so we got him started on Alex. And now, he is going crazy on Alex. He's doing super well.
Oh, there we go. Don't move.
There we go.
Okay, so he's doing super well. So, sometimes, he is doing the lessons with me in class and with the other students in my class. But if I see that he is really grasping the concept of what we're actually learning in class, I allow him to do Alex during some of those class periods during the week. So, he could be sitting at his desk, working on Alex because he has already mastered the topics that we've worked on in class recently. So, he is doing super well with that, and then he's also signing up for Alex during wind time. Susan, myself, and a couple of the teachers offer Alex during wind time, so they can come in and get some more topics learned for that as well. So, he's doing both in class and during wind time.
Just touching off this, so Jordan Leiser, I teach seventh and eighth grade math. So, yeah, I'm going to leave this one up for, so there's two particular students. One, that's in a similar capacity to this, I have a student that has very extreme anxiety. So, he was put into just my classroom that wasn't using Alex, so it was more of that standard classroom that you'd be used to for math. But he just couldn't take being with all those students. So, an advantage that we found with this Alex program, he got put into that about a month and a half ago, where he can do that outside of my classroom. I'm still monitoring him, he's still with another adult. But he's able to go through that stuff at his pace. And then, since this has been an ongoing issue, he's able to make up some of that knowledge. He's a seventh grader now, but he missed a bunch of math classes in sixth grade, so he's able to make up that knowledge. And then, similar to, I have a couple other students, because I don't use Alex quite yet in my classroom. But I have one particular student that came into my math class at very low achieving level and was out of there very often for behavior issues, other academic issues. And when he got put into the program, it really helped his work ethic because he could keep his distractions out of it. And then, he's getting through not only the seventh grade curriculum that he's in right now, but also catching up on sixth grade curriculum that he missed the previous year. And then, even this change with being part of that, feeling more confident in math, has helped him in my math class, when he's still learning along with the rest of the students, be a lot more confident, a lot more engaged, and go from low achieving failing to high B, A range. And then, I have a couple other students that it's doing a similar skill with. There are eighth graders that are missing some of those gaps, so that it's hard to keep up with the eighth grade curriculum. So, going into these wind time classes that one of us offer, doing the Alex program during that, and then that helps them reconnect with the curriculum I'm using.
So, I think overall, we're finding in this pilot year that it's really a great tool for this whole range of kids, whether they're, you know, above grade level, regular classroom, or have some gaps in their knowledge. We're just finding a lot of success with it and are really just excited about using this tool and the impact it's having in our kids. So, questions?
So, the Alex company that you get Alex from, they've designed six through eight?
It's a K through twelve program, actually. And in fact, it goes into post-secondary. My stepson is at the U and he is using Alex for part of his chemistry homework, which was kind of interesting to find out. So, it's, I think it's a growing.
I know, Pearson Publishing Company has the same type of program, but they're mostly for post-high schools.
Oh, okay.
They go off in that.
Yeah, I think this has started as a K-12 and maybe has expanded the other direction.
And this is McGraw-Hill is who does Alex.
Yes, because we have a current eighth grader right now that's using this program, I believe, and is taking tenth grade math with it.
Yeah, she's doing geometry.
Doing some geometry through the Alex.
She's, she's.
Working with the geometry class there as well.
Working with the geometry class in the high school, but she's here, and so part of her curriculum is using Alex.
And she's jumped over ninth into tenth already?
Yeah, last year.
Yes. As an eighth grader.
As an eighth grader, she's doing tenth grade work. And I think we have more students that would be capable of doing that kind of thing. We just haven't had the opportunity to give them that with our numbers. We don't have a whole classroom of students at that level, and so, this is, I, you know, suspect is going to allow us to do more than that.
Okay, you have a question. As they progress, tenth to that from twelfth grade, how sophisticated is Alex? Did it go through the calculus?
That's a good question. I believe it does go through high school. I would have to, I would have to check on that. I'm not sure if it goes on into calculus. I would not be surprised if it did, just because they do have some college-level classes in there.
I believe it does, Jay. When we went and toured and visited Kettle Marine High School in Milwaukee, they were using Alex, and they were using it in upper high school math.
Because I know some kids have a hard time with calculus and stuff.
Right.
If it's more of a tutorial-type thing, then it seems like they can work their way up.
So, they can do this at home too, if somebody's struggling with math.
Absolutely.
The parents don't understand something.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Couple of points that I'd like to make, if I may, when they talked about students coming in during wind time. We have some students, I mean, one of the students, I believe Mr. Leiser was speaking of specifically, has been a very reluctant learner and is coming into wind time voluntarily on his own to work on it as a thing too. And like you said, not only at the bottom, we have an eighth grade student that'll be getting high school credit for geometry that this program is helping with. As far as vision, kind of what I'm hoping for, what I believe we're hoping for, is as we continue to move towards personalized learning, one of the things, if you recall, Susan was actually here last year with Lauren Stanisowski about the Stellar class that they combined with that, with it. And this year, again, thinking on moving everything forward, Stellar's continuing. Mr. Opelia and Mrs. Stanisowski are working with Stellar. And Susan is working as a support with Stellar, so help keeping that going. And then, now this year, with not being in Stellar every day, helping as a support, she's helping with the support because we looked at the places and everything we've studied with personalized learning, and at least feedback that I've gotten and my perception when we've gone to different places, math seems to be the area that places or have a hard time figure out. With how do you do personalized learning in math? And when we were out in Milwaukee, we saw the program being, being used. And at least the things that we have had exposure to, this is so much, so much more than just do a problem, you got it right or got it wrong type thing. And with Jordan and Katrina coming on board, they've been absolutely fabulous. Like you said, really looking at, let's pilot, let's do this with a class of sixth graders, and it's grown into two classes. So, Jordan, he will work with those two classes as seventh graders next year. And then, we'll continue to build on how can we get personalized learning within the math classroom? And we're meeting during wind time with the math teachers this week, I think.
Tomorrow.
Might be tomorrow, yeah. Kind of start, starting to have the dialogue about, in the future, not having such a thing as advanced class and basic class. And there may still be a need for some students to have some intense supports. But what this will do for the first time that I've had experience is as a parent, if you have a child that can, that's excelling in math, for say, you're going to ask, well, and be nervous about how is my child needs being met? Well, the reality of it is, is no matter how we group kids, you're teaching to the middle of the class. When Jordan talked about what we think of as a traditional math class, just across the board, kind of more traditional, you come in, the kids sit down, maybe do a warm-up problem, you do review of the homework last night, what did you do? Teach a new concept and all working on the same. Well, in advanced class, you're still teaching to the middle, it's just a different, different middle. So, some kids are bored, some kids aren't getting challenged enough. And even if we have three kids that could do geometry, tenth grade math by an eighth grade, it didn't allow. Where this is allowing that, and it's for the first time putting me in a position where I can honestly look in the mirror and, and a parent, not only will your child's needs be met, but they'll be met better. Because they could be in an advanced math class and still being held back. Or, we're working with right now with some advanced kids, that they could do it, but it's so challenging for them. Where, like, you know, ideally, if I'm here, I'm working here. If it's here, I'm bored. If it's here, I'm getting a little frustrated. Where we have some kids that it might just be just so much of a reach that's creating some frustration, where now, I used to love math and not liking it, you know, where you could still be at your level. So, that's kind of what we're excited about as far as the possibilities for the future. And instead of waiting to figure out how we do this in math till last, like the other places we've gone, we're going to start right at, keep it at the beginning, and I can't say enough about the staff. And I also have to thank you that we have the resources, like being able to have a person like Susan that has the ability to help work right in the trenches with teachers as we move towards personalized learning and things too. So, very appreciative of that.
We got one more question.
Yeah.
What devices are they using with that?
The iPads, they can do it on their iPads.
Okay.
And really, any device that connects with the internet, you can do it on.
So, they can be doing that at home also?
Absolutely, yep. Yep, definitely. Thank you. Thank you very much.
When they answer a question wrong, does it tell them what the right answer is, or just try over?
It'll give them, so if they do it wrong, it first gives them a chance to redo it. If in the second attempt, it's still wrong, then it'll explain what happened, what they did wrong. And it's pretty good at knowing the most likely mistake and sort of pinpointing, oh, you probably did this part wrong.
Last comment I would make, Alex does not replace a teacher, as far as, it offers a lot. But what it is doing in the math class, from my perception, is allowing it to be learner-driven versus teacher-driven, much more so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, thank you.
We're doing public meetings today. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes personnel approval of prior meeting minutes and approval of financial transactions. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll go Sharon for resolution for acceptance of gifts.
We're asked the following, you have generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools. Therefore, it is be resolved to Little Falls Community Schools Board of Education to gratefully accept the gifts from City Sanitary Commercial, a donation of five hundred and fifty dollars to Flyer Robotics. The next two donations are for the FFA Club for their ninetieth anniversary, a donation of two hundred and fifty from Midwest Machinery, and a donation of five hundred dollars for the Complete Grain Systems. The Mothers of Preschoolers, or MOPs, if they're called, donation of four hundred dollars to food service. The motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution has been seconded by?
Second.
Okay, and we have a second by Kathy. And we will have a roll call vote, and Mark?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself is yes. So, the following has been approved.
Okay, we'll move on to report from board members. Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Julie? Jay?
Nothing at this time.
Sharon?
I do. I had a wonderful morning at the high school this morning. This morning, I was invited to sit in and listen to a number of excellent presentations from the juniors and seniors. I did, I learned a lot this morning in this class. I didn't realize both juniors and seniors were taking it. And the class was the Health Services Occupation Class. It's been taught by five years by Debbie, Yolenee, and Olin. And in this course, they do classroom study, hands-on practice, I've seen the bed with the dummy slaying in it, and job shadowing. I did not realize we were offering such a great opportunity. And I know we voted on it, and I've talked to it, I've talked to Debbie for the five years about it. Occupations that were introduced with this job shadowing included, one went to a dental office. We had one at a hospital lab, chiropractic, sonography, speech pathology, and physical therapy, public health and social worker positions, same-day services at St. Gabe's, and senior care at St. Otto's Highland, and then the building for the, one that was the former Lutheran Home Care Center. They also learned about doing home visits. And also, one was at the St. Francis Health and Wellness Center. I thought, when we passed this and we had discussed it ahead of time, that this was going to be just a study course for getting your CNA, your Certified Nursing Assistant course. It is, but it's turned out it's way much more than that. Some of the studies will allow the students to test out at another higher education college because we are not college-certified in that class yet. But they can go to like CLC and just test out, and then they'll get their college credit for it, saving quite a bit of money. And this Wednesday, the fourteen students that are in this will be testing to get their CNA, which is also a prerequisite for other college classes, so they won't have to take the CNA class when they go to college. They'll already have that, so that'll help a number of them that way, saving money again. And I left very impressed, not just with the expansion class curriculum, but a couple statements that were made by the students. One of the students said, in this class, I know I have a teacher and thirteen friends, old and new ones, that will have my back, and I can speak and ask for anything. And I mentioned that in the class, that I don't think I've ever had a student that has told me about that, about any class, that everybody in that class, they felt comfortable with and could speak to, and the teacher. And part of it, what got me involved with Debbie a number of years ago, was the movie Patch Adams, and she had borrowed mine for a few years, and then finally, I just gave her, I went and bought a copy and gave one to her because I had the problem of, where did I put it when she gave it back? And so, every one of them used a quote out of the Patch Adams movie while, when they did their presentation. And not because this was the shortest one, but because I thought it really was very thought-provoking. One of them had the quote, every moment is a choice. And that's something we can look at it for everything. But very impressed with it. Kind of going back tomorrow morning and seeing the rest of the presentations. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I don't have too much to say. I'll be attending a continuing ad meeting on Wednesday. And anybody cares, there's nine more Mondays till spring. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Steve?
Thank you, ma'am. Sure. Real quickly, just legislative session is getting ready to launch here pretty soon. So, it's the off-year of the biennium, so we'll see what, what's going to happen up at, up at St. Paul. I CC'd the board members today on a letter I sent to Senator Zelkin, Representative Creashia, concerning food service balances. It's becoming an issue, not only statewide, but nationwide, as deficits continue to grow for school districts throughout the state and the nation. So, I know it's, it's on a number of legislators' docket already. They're hearing it as well, so we'll see what happens. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to old and unfinished business. We have none, so we'll go to item number twelve, new business. And the first item is the twenty-twenty-one budget assumptions. Can I just fill a senator with you?
Basically, as we do each year, we have a set of budget assumptions for the coming fiscal year, which is twenty-twenty-one, if you can believe that already. Nothing out of the ordinary on here. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I think I noticed that there was a reduction in student number in the page one.
Yep, so, on the next item on the agenda, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I will, there is an error on the budget assumptions on number five, board states that the projected roll-forward numbers for all grades except early childhood, first grade, should be early childhood and kindergarten. Because we don't know our kindergarten numbers yet for next year, so it's just a minimal correction.
Are all our negotiations for all the contracts, are they up next year?
No. We still got another year. Summer up this, this next year. But if you remember, on the custodians and the teachers, we actually ended up doing two two-year contracts. So, this is actually year three. Correct. That we're in right now. And it's year three for all the other groups. So, we'll, we'll begin negotiations probably on the majority of those sometime this spring and this summer. Getting ready for the next round.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll vote for accepting the budget assumptions and approval for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-one. That's hard to say. Budget assumptions. All those in favor?
We haven't, we haven't.
Oh, I thought we had a motion. Sorry. Okay, is there a motion?
I moved.
And a second. Jay's motion. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, we'll go on to the enrollment projections, twelve point two.
So, with the enrollment projections, the total number that we're looking to use for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is a figure of two thousand three hundred sixty-five point eight, which is down from the number that was used for nineteen-twenty, which was twenty-four forty-two point five. So, based on enrollments that we're currently looking at in the nineteen-twenty enrollment is looking like it is going to slightly decline from eighteen-nineteen. We're projecting that there's going to be, again, a slight decline to the twenty-twenty-one school year.
And we're being conservative with that prediction.
Yep, yes.
Do we know if this is something that's going on statewide, nationwide, the enrollment numbers?
Well, where you're seeing the drop is juniors and seniors.
Okay.
And again, I think it's reflective of what public education is dealing with. And some of that is PSEO, some of that is homeschool, some of it's online school, some of it's attributable to a number of the mental health concerns that are, that are young people are having. And so, all of that adds up to kind of an unexpected, unpredictable year, where we have, for whatever reason, the alternative school's another aspect of that, just seen a number of students go elsewhere in their junior and senior year. You know, it's, we're hoping that we continue to pick up, like we did this year, a nice kindergarten group coming in. We're, we're again predicting conservatively there. We're, we're again predicting conservatively there, um, because we don't know. Um, and so uh, the number that you have in front of you is a, is a real conservative number, we feel. Um, and hopefully we'll be able to adjust that at, at the end of the year as we look forward to next year, that, that the number can be raised.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a motion to accept the twenty twenty-one enrollment projections? Also move to accept them?
I got a question after.
Oh, okay. Well, let's get a second, and then we'll question. Is there a second?
Second.
Shall we second it? Okay, Jay.
I think with the uh, prospects that are looking for Little Falls, with the uh, God for plant process opening up next fall, hopefully. Then, I think our conservative projections have increased quite a bit there.
Well, I hope so, I hope so, I hope so. But you know, so, you know, normally public schools don't have to talk about retention. Normally, that's a word that colleges use. But we're really kind of into a mode with our upper-level kids, our, our upper-aged kids, that we have to look at retention. What, what's going to keep our juniors and seniors in our district? Um, and that's not something that we've really had to systemically do before. Um, and now it's something I think that, uh, you know, Mr. Bjorg and I have had a number of, of, of very um, useful and meaningful conversations about that very thing. Um, and so those, those discussions are, are happening at the high school, they're happening within the district leadership team. Um, and so uh, you know, this is, this is not a, a, um, an issue that is, that is just being allowed to go to waste. So hopefully we'll get better because of it.
Can you give your comments, questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll go to twelve point three, which is first reading of policies.
Yep, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, these are just some policies for you to review. This is the, the first reading, so um, definitely will accrue tonight. Again, like we do on all of our policies, if you have any questions as you, as you peruse those, um, drop me a line, give me a call, let me know, and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll bring it up and, and talk about it specifically. But all of these are fairly minor um, reviews at this point.
Lot of renumbering.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to twelve point four. Authorization to utilize parcel forty-eight point six one zero four point zero 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 in consideration for the community recreation facility. And we'll have a presentation by Mr. Romacher.
Madam Chair, I want that we uh, adopt the.
Oh, okay, so we, you're making the motion that we accept.
Get it, and I will second.
Okay, Sharon will second. And we'll have.
Now we can go forward with that question.
You're halfway there, alright.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the school board. Um, you received a letter that I, I wrote. Um, the city of Little Falls has been exploring opportunities around a community recreational facility um, of some kind, or, you know, going back even two years when we asked at the, the last general fund, general referendum. The plans, as we've been working out, details that we've been working out right now, as we've been working with a key stakeholder group, and Superintendent Jones is part, uh, invited to participate now. After that meeting, we actually had uh, direction to go forward and, and meet with the school, and Superintendent invited us to participate in the conversation with the facilities committee. Um, I know uh, uh, board members, Blue and Spillam were a part of that conversation. And from that, from that discussion, it has been very clear and evident that this parcel um, is really the ideal fit for what we're looking for in terms of a location uh, to cite this facility. It needs a lot of the size requirements, it certainly is ideal in, in its proximity to the highway, as well as it's the, the efforts that we wanna make in terms of um, the recreational space that it can be utilized, both for the community as well as um, children, or people of age that are, are, you know, school-aged. Uh, there's, there's a lot of aspects about this in other communities that make a lot of sense to have facilities like this located in close proximity to, to schools. Um, and seeing that this uh, land, while already utilized, um, but certainly not developed, um, would, would be an ideal fit for us. And in terms of the city and the school, and, and moving forward with partnership, um, as well as potentially um, offsetting a lot of the, uh, any sort of acquisition costs in other areas around this proximity to the highway and our twenty highway, twenty-seven highway, um, ten, three seventy-one interchange. When we were looking at this, we were making considerations into areas that the city already owns for property. Um, those just did not fit the, the need or the ability to be located close to that, that highway proximity and the other redevelopment opportunities that come with that. So um, it really is just a site that everybody, I feel, that has been a part of this conversation has got behind as a location that we really wish to pursue. Um, so, that said, as Superintendent mentioned, this legislative session is starting, and the process for what we need to go through is to make a request actually to the legislature first, before we can go to the general fund, or general referendum, um, and get votes from our, our city. Um, and we have, so therefore, I'm coming to you asking for opportunity to, to use that parcel as, in consideration for planning. Um, obviously, there's a lot more details that we're gonna have to work out on this process, but up until the point that we need to have details to the, to the legislature, I think this will serve our, our needs if we do approve um, this consideration to me.
I have a comment, between three and four, I had several phone calls from teachers not happy. And uh, these teachers are telling me they utilize that property. One of them said they use it weekly, at least once a week, for science egg activities from both middle school and high school. And they feel that, you know, now they can, they said it's three minutes to get over there. And with any other property or piece of property, you'd have to schedule a bus, pay the bus driver, it would take you minimum ten to fifteen minutes to get there, another ten to fifteen minutes to get back. And all of them, and I, I agree with them, being a teach, having been a teacher, that there's only so much land, and you're coming from the same perspective, but our job is to educate students. And right now, if we pulled that away, there'd be several programs that would really, I think, be harmed because it, it gives them a hands-on opportunity with science and outdoor education and that type of thing. So um, at this time, I'm personally gonna vote no.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
And so uh, you know, certainly, um, as, as the superintendent of the district, I understand that that land gets used. Um, I also understand that the land gets used sparingly, um, and not on a, on a continual, consistent, every single day basis. Um, as this district for um, my tenure here has looked and talked about community um, center gymnasium-type activity proposals, um, it has always been with the intention that, that we have a space need that exists right now in this district. Um, and that we've, have done our very best to, to counteract that. That has meant practices at all hours of the day, it has meant um, not having uh, uh, certain events because of a lack of space. Um, I don't contest that um, there are some classes that use that. Um, as we've stated internally, and, and I've stated to um, the score of teachers that called you today, um, we would do everything in our power, um, which means that we would do it, um, to set up the opportunity for transportation, so they would have the opportunity to go to other places to do that. The city and the district have, have talked about swapping land, uh, to try to come up with a forested area uh, through um, what the city owns or what the city would obtain for us to use. Um, it's no different than what we do with the garden. Um, we put kids and classes on a bus and take them to the garden, um, to work. Um, is it ideal from what it is now? No, absolutely not. Obviously, it's better for an egg class to walk across the street. But right now would be better for all of our physical education classes, our, 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 our sports athletic teams that would use the facility on a daily basis to walk across the street as well. And so from a district perspective, I think we look at the greater good aspect of this, at least under a consideration basis. Um, if, if indeed we are educating um, students in this community, I think that we, we owe it to the community to educate them and provide opportunities for them as well. Those are the, the premises that, that leadership has taken into these meetings, um, as we've gone forward.
Any other questions, Jay?
I got a few questions on that, John, I was thinking of, uh, do you know the size of that property?
It's about fourteen acres.
Is that big enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, it's so much so that um, the uh, the wetland, the pond area would not be disturbed at this point.
Okay.
Some of the preliminary design elements, just looking at the space requirements for the facility, um, over what we're talking about right now, being over seventy thousand square foot, um, does meet that, it does retain that wetland portion, um, as well as provide room for future expansion for other, um, other potential assets.
Okay. Next thing. Trailer court affect, or anyway?
I wouldn't anticipate that, no.
Okay.
Not, not directly based on the construction.
I had questions, people about how that can affect the trailer court, they have to, they have to move it.
Nope.
So since you said there's opportunity for other expansion, my thought is, could that other expansion be leaving a portion of that land? That could be utilized with, because I know I was told that there's three ecosystems there. There's the wetland, the mature forest, and the young forest. So to find a replacement property would be, I would think, a little more difficult to find all three of those things. But how much of this land is going to be utilized with parking lot and building?
Um, it's anticipated prob, up to ten acres of the, of the lot.
Fourteen.
Yeah, of the fourteen. Um, so in our consideration, when we, after the facility meeting met, the input that we gathered, our tech team actually was taking into um, consideration retaining portion, you know, a portion of this property to, so that it would have that, that same.
So the teachers could still use it.
And the teachers could still use it.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that was, like I say, it's, having taught, I know that weather can play a role in schedule a bus, because the mini bus only takes fourteen people, and that includes a driver, so there's rarely a class that has fourteen kids, so you'd have to hire a bus driver. That means you have to fill out paperwork, computer work, ahead of time. And then sometimes the weather doesn't cooperate. And whereas if it's just a walk across the street, if it's a bad day, you go with plan B for that day, and next day it's better you do it that way. But if you're busing people all the time, you can't make that switch so easily.
Sure.
So I hope that the city will really consider, and maybe talk to a group of teachers that utilize that area, and have them look at, I don't know, developing a plan for keeping some of that area. So my guess, my question is then, does the city own it, the whole thing, or who owns it? After, after this is built?
And that we could, that could be up for the discussion afterwards. So we're, we're only looking at using, considering it as part, as a location for the plan. The ownership, the, the city would own the area, that would be the property of where the development is, of the facility, whatever is remaining, if we wanted to carve out a proportion of that, that could be retained by the school district. We, you know, those, those pieces can still be negotiated.
The district would not want to own the land that the building would be on.
No.
Yeah, I understand that.
The city would need to own that.
I would hope that in construction, you know, sometimes I see construction, and they just wipe out a whole area and aren't. And yet I've seen construction where they go around a tree, or that there would be a lot of consideration for.
There would definitely be consideration, being it is such a well-grown forested area, and retaining that as vegetative buffer certainly between that, the, the facility and the residential district. There's properties that are close by.
Okay.
That would absolutely be something I would consider in our planning process.
So I can count on this happening? People that called me, I can call and say?
We'll have the conversations with them.
Okay. More than conversations, considerations.
Considerations and.
I got one more question.
Okay, true.
Okay, I'm gonna shift a little bit. This um, referendum before a half a cent sales tax.
Correct.
And um, when I look at it, whatever's taxable items. A person would spend, spend a thousand dollars a month on, and they have to be on taxable items.
Yeah, items that are taxable, so not food, clothing, and um, sales tax for vehicles is not a portion that's captured by the additional half percent.
Okay, so food and clothing are not included?
Correct.
Okay. So a person would still have to spend a thousand dollars a month on taxable items. You know, they'd have to generate five dollars more.
Right. Yep, yep.
Okay.
And we're all paying this when we go to other cities.
Correct.
And, and we, and we gain nothing from it.
Yeah, the areas.
Where here, people will be coming here.
Right.
And purchasing, and this area would gain the profit from it.
Yeah, in two thousand eighteen, we conducted a, a local option sales tax analysis uh, in partnership with the University of Minnesota Extension Office. Um, they've done these all over the state, so they're pretty reputable. I'd say they lean very conservative in the totals that they, we get. Um, the county actually did the same analysis that they had. Uh, their um, their analysis showed that we would have fifty-eight percent of the tax would be paid for by Little Falls residents, forty-two percent by residents outside of the city of Little Falls. Um, and that we would generate a little over a half a million dollars at that time. Um, the county did their sales tax analysis at the same time as we did for their transportation tax on a half cent as well. And they showed that they would generate a, just under a, a million dollars in total revenue, the, the study did. They actually, this was the first year that they completed that sales tax collection, they generated almost a million and a half dollars in total revenue. So.
How much was that?
One point five million.
Oh, wow.
Well, I did sit in that, at the facilities meeting. And when I left the meeting that day, I know we had discussed both the teacher usage of the land and a couple other parcels of land, and this was the most feasible one to use. And I know it was a real concern of the people sitting there, especially from the school district, that the teachers maintain a portion of that land to be used for the students.
And if I, if you set a contingency upon the use and consideration of this property, we will adhere to it.
Okay. We will make sure that happens. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, thank you.
So this is pretty much just us agreeing that yes, let's go forward and take a look at it.
To allow us to use that parcel in consideration.
For the plan. You can find us another swamp.
A close swamp.
Those are easy to find.
Yes.
I'm gonna flip all field.
Yes.
Put him.
Kathy, if I may add, so, John, if I'm correct, I believe the, the, the wish of the architects is to have the profile of the project be as close to Eleventh Street as possible, thus preserving some of the woodslands that, that you were concerned about. And we have, you know, we have two other wetland properties on the school.
We've got the one.
We have the one, yeah, directly attached right behind the science department, we have the one west of school. Um, so we do have two other wetland properties plus that one. And then, again, I think if you keep the profile as close as you can to Eleventh Street, you'll be able to preserve quite a bit of woods behind.
It makes a difference.
Yep, it does.
How close it is to traffic with wildlife and things like that, too. So I would hope that we can keep some of that for usage. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, we'll vote. All those in favor of um, let's see, approving the authorization to utilize this parcel for a community recreation facility. Yay?
All those in favor.
All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, I will vote yes on this, okay. Any other things to come before the meeting, before we adjourn? Have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye.
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 All right, we adjourn.